Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, Hester. Special City Council Meeting is called to order. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
President.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Tris.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Great. Um, new business.
Consider approval selecting the law firm pursuant to the legal services of the RFP.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the RFP from Perkins Law Group for one year, with the option to extend for three years, I believe we last discussed.
The four.
The property move is supported. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Aye.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard.
Nay.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Yea.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scott.
I don't understand anything because I was, I didn't like any of them. Oh, and English is sad.
She abstained.
I should not stand by our story.
If you abstain, you vote no, I believe.
You never voted over there. Well, you need to have an audience be quiet.
I was here, right.
So, can she abstain? I don't think she can.
It's standing if you have a precedent or a game.
Copyright is quite.
Nay.
And she do it all, you know. Now you call me.
Okay. Mayor Nolan.
Yeah.
For the tree.
Okay. Now we're at the item B, discussion, a study session budget. Darren said he'll be here about 6:15, so we got three or four minutes. So we can eat our shit, speak.
Go into recess.
Yep, go with recess.
Yeah. I started to do. And yeah, so I did all the thing. And I sure since I could, I never told him make a motion of going to recess because you had already all them.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we go into recess for...
Until Darren gets it.
Until the budget discussions start.
You got a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Aye.
I ain't good. We're in recess, do I?
Yeah, you can talk now.
I hear I'm not supposed to be doing that. Anyway, I was trying to ask. Hey, Fred, I think it's an info. I should probably be searching on my face. I get takes one another. Anyway, um, she gonna get like this. She gonna get her ass horned.
Okay. Why?
And I'm talking about somebody who she never did. Okay, she's kept off the my balls. You know what, I'm out of here. See, I'm gone. I'm gone.
Moving to full. To release South Badgers. Whatever you can say.
I thought I might quit this. So if they close the other big shit building, yeah.
So what's your fault? No, she just. I kind of listen, but she is right. It's you two.
I see y'all.
I know she said, I did.
I was saying, huh? I was saying. Yeah. I would.
Right. Scussed to hear you. In the park, he said. He's got, calling my voter, typing with the phone from here. As we got out of here last evening, as I didn't say anything, I just came up to turn on the lights. But he should not be, he's hiding, you finding that this come to his code, you saying he ain't wrong. Into a base, inspect the cake.
He still was, I'm fired.
Think it's talking about anybody from the audience when they're speaking their public disposition, orientation, or general meeting, they need with.
Hey, bye. We got her. Bye. Yeah, it's all. Need to look there. There's this nearby, but. He will be back wrecked. So he did. He can do all that. Oh, it would be. Just, just online from the state, they could star in the city. He'll.
By instead sitting. I've ever been telling you. I'm taking a certain. During the day during. It's not hardly worse. So not death, or is it a cause of people hate you?
No, man. I don't want. I'm not actually right.
But hence, it's a quick Jesus.
Maybe I give it.
Really?
He knows.
I'm the best.
When he do it very good. Oh, but. That's not really good. So okay, I haven't paid my sister. She got stupid, yes. She called me. And now you have your.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just say, you know, what do you just say?
Here, that's pretty. Okay, let me say that. You combine. All we did to do was. I'm about to. Pay the. Yeah, you're a kid. About. Ladies and you go in the blood. And but we not your style. I'm sitting there, I'm beautiful. Yeah, I'm free and it was not my life. Where I got like. The deal then, well, I mean. The last minute. Those things, I said, yeah, see, I think. Brandon, so this. We can't. The power. The goal was. Because. In there. My ears always get. We talked about. They barely know.
Let go.
We're in the demon world. Scored eighteen, although the family is calm. Yet, you do stuff.
We didn't like that.
Sure. Yeah. Believe that. I knew where that. What's in white, carry it up?
No, I don't.
Time I leave that. That thank you. But I keep on patient. Probably good, make this such a. Then we can work. Start over. Better place, I'm sorry. But it's just. You don't deserve this. Yeah, man. Thank you. Sorry. The, all right, next, I just got to walk you all these friends. I had to submit my comments. I. It's what happened. We got it. And here is the. She's given that outlook room, deciding to the seven hundred. So I can marry it. It's like. Then first, the. And I worry. I'm so serious. They do it.
It's no bad.
Where else would be out? No, that's a true.
He's trying.
And I'm in that interview. I was shaking, I said. The cops.
They too busy.
Needed. And. Water, water. Leave it, it's a basic place.
It's always.
No, we're not sure you do that. We get spared. Like I said, once. That's what it been. This golden new dress. Ross baskets. That's cold. Get that outside. Damn. He felt warm. I possess. To me, this paradise. Okay. Well, he said, I can't. Open. And now he. Move on to it. Yeah. But. The. Hey, Nick. Totally balanced with. Do you think we seen something? Very good. Yeah, I mean, it's possible. Where's the show? Crazy people has weak at all, you know. Over there in pain. So I'm still with theory. I'm on TV, don't go with it. I'll thank he is. What, what? Yeah, what if they gave help here? Once. But not. It really should have been able to. I question. So, or, she's looking into it some more. I mean, if the guy. How's that? Treasury only. Like right. Oh, exactly. You see, because, uh, the last time, I don't miss how I say it. But they, they see you started. The paper. Sarah. Hey, that's you. You left it. And I'm. We'll try to go with the same. You're blocking the. Hey, I know you also. Yeah, I would like it towards. If I had to, I mean, it's something here. You're up there, y'all planning for. House. You may have a sister. Oh, she isn't. Okay, I'll talk to you. I could use. Spade, man. She did y'all cold service. Send that to everybody, got it, they're fair. Uh, I also, I feel married, I thought it should show it to the activity that it was done. So, right, five, assuming you're right, that was. Yeah, I, I, that's the only thing I don't think of there. Because I know it just dips. Yeah. Because I think it's flashing, some of that was in the way he's. There's no way anyone wants it. There was some money that I think is, is like a table answer. Okay. So I'm with the. You want more? Who's this?
I'm for. I'm being.
He wants that, they can.
What's going on? That's the way.
We don't want to say. Yeah, well, she might. Yeah.
All right, y'all, let's go ahead and get started.
All right.
Recession is over. Okay.
You got a call.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we come out of recess at 6:22 PM.
Of support.
The property move support discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Stay.
You don't want to come back? You don't want to come back?
A screen, take off.
That's, now that's quantity.
Ready, go home.
You just got out of here.
He got bored. Oh, my God. That's just. He done me with that one.
Yeah, like, I wouldn't expect it now, now.
Now you're glad. I. Night.
Well, man. You should have bought us some drink.
You know, we got one.
No. Light as well.
You light it up. Getting.
I'll play, you bring him up behind this list, I'll be. Bibbs only showing up to make sure we put money in his budget. Look at it.
And safe, but. I just. Sitting. Yes, it's a pity. You think they're gonna follow me?
Right, you gotta make sure they fund it.
You were there.
We in trouble, just fifty two questions. That. We have some other funds. We're gonna finish general fund and then go on to a couple of other funds, you bro, with a shame.
What song is?
Oh, yeah, there's several funds. Oh, yeah.
That's it.
Oh, yeah. Usually, usually we spend eight to ten hours on budget. And we did, uh, what we do, hour fifteen minutes left? That, that's what. And then y'all had hot dates on Friday night, since you didn't want to do Friday night.
That's fine. So y'all gotta be ready.
Well, hell. We gotta pick a pipe at some point.
It's like, fuck it.
We're not real married.
We're.
You can all.
I screwed that evening.
You should have, man.
You can talk about nothing, they swear.
Well, first thing was, but you can. I just wish there's a path to bold, gonna have a woman.
I see things happen. Some drink.
Great topic. You. You.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone doing this evening?
Good.
So wanted to, um, just kind of pick up from last week. I don't know if there were any questions or anything from, uh, in last week. That I'll go ahead and get started.
Good.
No, I don't know. I just didn't make the note of the GL number that we left off on? Or the?
Page.
Yeah, so.
Page two.
Seven, yeah.
It's a personal of the fund that is the one.
I think we finished up, uh, with, um, Department 270.
270. It's for you. We didn't get, so you starting that police?
Yes.
Okay. We eat, we're gonna defund the police?
No. Don't.
That's close, we're no, now.
Don't pray.
I'm about to go home and pack up. Oh, oh.
We did.
There we go. Wouldn't that be so? This will be wild.
Left off at the city attorney.
Yeah.
The attorney.
Yeah, we started.
I'm gonna get it.
Yeah.
Was that Department?
Because I got Bay Eight. We did three, three store. You didn't do the personnel. I said Bay Eight.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you start, starting person.
One cities.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what they say. I'm a.
Okay, say.
Oh, like.
Personnel, city attorney, city attorney, pay six.
Um.
So.
Pay, pay six.
There's no.
Okay, so we are on, um, page six, general fund. Department 270. As, uh, Councilman Gibson indicated, um, we finished up with the Department 266 city attorney. So, and I know you guys just took a vote. Um, so I think we had covered all of that. And then we'll pick up with, uh, personnel slash HR.
Okay.
Okay. So, pretty straightforward on here. We've got the, um, salaries, uh, permanent for the HR director. Uh, that is our main, um, our only, well, our main employee there. We do get some volunteer work. Um, I believe it's the senior alliance that, that assist over in that, um, department. Um, but the salaries number there is for our HR director. Um, and then we've got, uh, an allocation for workers comp. Some consultant numbers that are in there. And then just, uh, small numbers for education, training. But I think the two main things are gonna be our, uh, workers comp and obviously the salaries. And again, it's one, one, um, one employee with the director. And then the assistance in that department is done on a voluntary basis. So there's no, no cost or expenses, um, incurred by the city for that.
You. Boom. You.
Any questions? Okay. I will go on, on to page seven. Um, Department 301, Police Department. And I'm gonna just kind of cover it. Chief, definitely Jafan. Anything that you may want to add here. Um, we are.
The gun.
Uh, we are, we are essentially keeping the.
That's what I.
Same.
Right.
Um, structure in terms of the staffing level. So we have not changed the staffing level for the police department. Some of the unions, um, some of the union employees are due for a raise. So there's some, some, some adjustments, um, associated with that. But I wanted to, to really, um, kind of dig into some of the numbers that you see here to make sure we're, uh, kind of giving you guys an understanding of what's going on here. Um, and again, chief, you know, weigh in and correct me if I misstate anything or, or, uh, if you want to give some further clarification. So essentially what we do at the, um, you know, during the budget process, we project out a certain, uh, cost projection based on certain number of staffing positions. We generally will assume that all of those positions are filled from July 1 through June 30. Sometimes you make some cost adjustments. Um, but, but if any vacancies arise, it, it does two things. One, it'll cause a staffing issue within the police. And we'll see a similar dynamic in the fire department that generally they're gonna pick up with overtime. And then it also will cause the, the permanent salaries figure to be lower than what was projected. And I'm sorry, we need to just go back to the very bottom of page number six. Um, at the very bottom, we have the, uh, the salaries listed for the police department. So that's, that's our main staffing number. And so what's kind of going on this year is that we're seeing, um, and if you look at the amended budget for 24, which is, uh, the second column from the left. You saw, you see where we, for this fiscal year, we had $2.229 million that was projected.
Before us.
Let me, uh, get, I'm sorry. Just on the page. Say, cause I will. Indian.
To Paul, I think. To. I'm so.
Yeah, the very bottom, 301.
I agree.
Yeah.
You can use this.
And it's the, oh, dust.
So, so in looking at, uh, at the very bottom of page number six, you see the, uh, two, $2,229,000 is what was, uh, the amount for this year's budget. Right now, we're projecting below that because of the vacancies. Um, we're just not running, um, in terms of the expenses are not being incurred within that particular category. But we're asking for, um, or recommending that based on the staffing level. You know, we were putting it at 2.32 million, which allows against for some of those salary increases, uh, raises that are part of the union contract. And then I'm gonna flip to the next page. So you see, um, we've got 2.3 million for this year. Um, and then overtime. Um, we only have budgeted $300,000 this fiscal year for overtime. We're projecting out about $550,000 in overtime. And again, a good portion of that is just gonna be tied to the staffing levels. The vacancies that occur. I mean, if I'm speaking correctly, um, is gonna cause those officers that are, are on staff to have to incur overtime in order for, you know, for the police chief in order to, uh, be able to deploy enough resources. So generally what we do is that I recommend we take a look at kind of the combined number to get a sense of what we're, what we're spending. So, um, for this, this past fiscal year, we had just about, um, two point, a little, little more than 2.5 million that we have, um, projected between salaries and overtime. For this year, with 550,000 in, in overtime and just under 1.7 million, we're coming in just a little bit below that figure. Um, again, just, you know, the balance of how that being split is a little bit different, but the total number is a little bit below, um, what was initially budgeted. For the coming fiscal year, again, keeping the staffing levels the same, assuming that we get back up to full staffing and then try to allocate enough money for overtime. Because historically, we always tend to undercut that overtime number, even when we got, uh, a better staffing level and lower vacancy. So the total amount is the 2.3 that's being recommended is the 2.32 million along with 400,000, which takes us to about 2.7 million, a little bit more than 2.7 million, which is, and it's gonna be not only an increase of what we are expecting to actually spend this year, but it's a little bit of an increase over last fiscal, or the current fiscal year's budget. We just wanted to lay those numbers out and, um, you know, kind of explain how those numbers work and what's actually being sought here. So we're, we're keeping the, the staffing levels the same, including the, uh, increases tied to union contracts as well as making a, uh, what we would consider to be a more, uh, realistic projection in terms of overtime, which results in, uh, an increase in the overall dollars that the department has to spend on salaries and overtime.
You are depending on filling the bag. Aye, this lady.
Okay. And this overtime, is this mandatory overtime or they can volunteer for the overtime? Is this mandatory?
Some of it is mandatory. So if we think I have someone that's supposed to work a shift and maybe they call them sit.
Do we have someone that is supposed to work a shift and they call them sit? Then if we can't get someone to volunteer to stay over for that overtime, then we force them to stay over. So it's mandated.
It's mandated in respect.
Now, it wasn't, it was said that some of the employees are due raises.
Yeah, so based on the union contracts, um, we have, uh, two Teamsters and Com, I believe, are the two unions in the police department. And so based on those contracts, there are some, um, increases that are, are owed for the upcoming.
So that is in this budget? You have this 2.7 million?
We did, we did, uh, roll that into those, correct.
And we did apply for the, the grants that we just done, right?
Um, that, I, I can't.
FDT?
No. Um, cop. So we do have a cop's grant that is, um, ending this fiscal in 24, correct? Is that the end of the?
We just, uh, reapply for an extension.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And that was for six officers, I believe, through the cops grant.
Um, Councilwoman Richardson, what you done? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, we're not still doing that tier hiring. Are we still doing tier one and tier two? No, I'll tell you.
No, so, yeah, so all new officers are, are.
Banana.
Benefits, pension.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say about tier, the tier tiring?
Yeah, they were doing like tier one and tier two, we were coming in like that. I didn't, I didn't think we were still doing that, but I just wanted to make sure.
That was on.
Send agreement, okay.
Oh, because.
We're lying part timers, she didn't get bad.
Just. Gotcha. You didn't send.
Still, I.
I have a question. Yes.
Uh, with regards to the cops grant, this, uh, 2.32000, uh, the dollar amount, 2.3 million for the recommended budget, uh, is that?
Before the grant?
Or, or is this in addition to the grant?
So, so the grant is essentially, it reimburses us for the cost of the officers. And that, um, some of those monies were included last week when we went over the revenues. And when I talked about some of those, uh, one-time reimbursements, we're expecting some of those, um, those cop, the reimbursements from the cop grants to, to be in those revenues. So essentially the, the expenses are what they are. And then we can just show those to, I, I think cops grant is through, uh, Department of Justice from the federal government. And we just show them what we're actually, uh, spending for those eligible officers. Okay, this is, this, this here reflects the cost and then we get, uh, reimbursement for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I want to ask you, what's in the professional consultancy? What's in that, in online items? What else is in?
Um, much of that is the, um, dispatch services, uh, if I'm not mistaken. I believe that is with, um, I think you guys just had a contract on Monday. Um, City of Dearborn, so I believe that is the, uh, dispatch.
Wait, hold on. Again. Um, the pension.
Yes.
Um, is this regard, this is for the full-time employees now? Does this have anything to do with the retirees?
So this is for the active, uh, police officers, um, who are pension eligible. We do, um.
Geez, like.
And so, so there's, there's really kind of two ways of, of, of going, uh, going at the pension number. The pension system will give us, uh, an estimate of what they say needs to come in from the city for the next fiscal year. And that Jason is, Jason's on the, um, uh, board, uh, he's on the pension board. So we can, we get the number and they say, hey, this is what we estimate the city needs to contribute. So they, they get two contributions. One is from the city, um, out of the city's funds. And then the other, the employee, um, pays a certain amount of their, um, out of their paycheck. The other way that we can do it is we can essentially, we know the percent that the city has to contribute and we just pay it, um, based on the actual earnings. That's generally how we do it. That's why the number, um, for this fiscal year is below where we had budgeted because the, the, the amount of, of salaries that was being earned was, was just below, below the, um, the number. And so that $900,000, what we tried to do is we tried to, we tried to really estimate, make a real, a good faith estimate of exactly how much was gonna need to come from the city between police and fire based on the, um, estimates that we got from the pension system. And so that 900,000 is strictly for pension and that's the city's contribution. And if you, you'll notice, it's, it's a, it's a fairly, you know, significant amount above what we are projecting for this year. But it's, again, just based on what we have, um, what we've received from the pension system in terms of their calculations on what's needed.
So you amended, the amended budget was like 1440 and he went down to the 900. So. Is this because we lost people?
Yeah.
Employees?
Honestly, I'm not sure how last year's number was calculated. I don't know if that, I think, um, some of that may have been trying to get caught up or.
Well, caught up or off bar. Say, our previous actuary that was done, is that what we're going off right now?
From last month.
So, yeah, so I was actually hoping to talk to you about that because I went through that actuary and it is absolutely incorrect.
Then, then.
Incorrect.
Should we be having this conversation?
We definitely should, simply because it doesn't. We definitely should, simply because it doesn't represent the amount of employees actually contributing into the fund. It has us at, I think, 14 between police and fire for the last two years contributing to the fund with 82 recipients. So the fire's been at 21 for the last two years. And I'm not sure Chief Jenkins to speak on this, but I know they've had roughly 20 officers.
Yeah.
So their, their numbers are, they're getting redone as we speak.
So, so, so the one thing that I did, I remember they gave us estimate, Jason, of like 1.5 million of what they said the city needed to contribute, the employer contribution for the city. You're saying that the employee contribution is too long?
So it, yeah, they're showing that we're, we just don't have enough individuals. They have the, they have the incorrect amount of individuals contributing to the fund.
Okay, which will?
So fire's paying 12%. Command pays 12% and I think Teamsters pays 6%. So they have us at four firefighters.
Okay.
When in fact, we have 20. So that's going to increase that number.
Employee.
The employee contribution.
Lower the employee.
Lower the employer contribution. So that number is going to change.
For the, probably for the better, for the.
For the better, yes.
City standpoint. In fact, if you're able to follow that, so we, we got a, a actuary report and they gave us a total contribution number. And from that, they said, this is what we project, employers are going to contribute. And here's what we estimate the city needs to contribute. It was a little bit more than 1.5 million, I think it was 1.5, 6 million. And that is why we have the split. If you take, if you look at pension of 900,000 for police and then down below, if you look at pension for fire, which is 101337718, you'll see on the far right, you'll see 664,000. Those two numbers came from, they gave, that total number came from the report that Jason was just referring to. What Jason is saying is that the, the total number will, will, probably won't change, but they'll probably come back and give us a higher estimate on the employee's contribution, which will mean we, we, we should be able to lower what, what we have in here for budgeted numbers for, that, which is the city's contribution. So the 900,000 and the 664 could come down some.
That's good, man.
What are you done?
Counselor? Yes, ma'am.
I have one other question about, I don't, for the clothing allowance. There's nothing in there for 20?
So clothing allowance is actually a.
Is that like uniform allowance or something?
So clothing allowance is actually the, is uniform allowance for firefighters. I think, and Jason and I spoke, we spoke about this last weekend and again this evening. I think what's happening is, and you see, you see $106,000 that, that's in there. I think Chief Jenkins, the two main bonus, or two of the main bonuses, besides holiday pay for officers, is equipment and gun. We generally will combine those, combine those and you'll see an equipment allowance. I think, I think it's about 2,900 that they get, or something to that effect. But that clothing allowance, the reason why there was no budget for it la, this current year, no budget for it this year is because I, I'm pretty sure that amount is in there in error. What I believe happened is that, because those, those bonuses are paid, I believe, in the fall. And what I think happened is the payroll system didn't code it right. So they, they put it into the wrong category. So we're probably going to move that as part of the year and wrap up. But there's no clothing allowance, you know, no clothing bonus for, for police officers. It's the gun and equipment.
And gun.
And we did, we did allocate for those.
So I'm not mistaken.
I'll be, well, we only give a thousand allowance when you, geez, that's what on.
Yeah, but we lumped it into dipping, gun and.
They get probably a hundred and a gun allowance, I took it just the same. The same that we're, okay, they get like 29, oh, for the whole.
So they get like 400 for a gun and then.
That's.
Yeah, 2,500 for a court. So that, that's, that's the term that we've always used and that's why that's, that, that's in that budget there. And then if you look down in fire, you'll see that they have a clothing allowance and that number, I believe, is artificially low. So I'm, I'm just thinking that there was just not the correct coding with payroll when those, because those bonuses have been paid out, obviously. Okay, so we'll, we'll kind of keep on moving. You guys touched on a couple of items. So, you know, we, we spoke to the salaries. We, another, another, one of the major items there is holiday pay. Again, I think there are some issues with how, how that's been calculated from a payroll standpoint. We'll dig into that with the payroll system, with the third-party payroll company. But we, you know, we, we generate that calculation based on the amount of salaries that are projected. Then we have our fringes and everything. We've, we've talked about the pension, equipment allowance. Then we get into some of the more administrative things. We have office supplies, operating supplies. Those haven't really changed much. I mean, I think generally we're keeping them fairly in line with the request from Chief Jenkins in the Police Department. We did shave a little bit off of the fuel from the request. Those numbers are, are somewhat, if you look at the projected activity, not quite sure if those numbers are completely capturing everything because again, that's an allocation. We, we have one account and then we split it between, if I'm saying that correctly, Jerome, aren't we supposed to split it between departments?
Hey, between water, fire, and police, they have police out. They have people that take cars home, they have gas car.
Okay.
So the fuels.
Now it's a count, which is quarter. Then we have a count which is, right, right sprints. And that's what the gas car.
So the, so the, the fuel budget is split between three different departments, is what?
Yes, how?
I mean, has, there are a few accounts. And I, I look at it and I see, probably looking each last year, and I try to average out if the gas might be in the upcoming year, could it sludge away? And then I give it my mountain top rate.
And so, Councilman, we have the, uh, account. And then from an accounting standpoint, we have to split it between, and I'm not sure if we're, because right now, the numbers, I think the number's probably lower than I would expect to be just based on some of the prior, prior year charges, so.
Well, we can now a little bit, especially when you're out.
Okay.
Your house over there.
At your yard?
Yeah, okay, yeah. You have four comps there. He dedicated to the police, one dedicated to us and fire, and then these group shots by.
That's, that's what I was just about to ask, what we doing in your house? I know Wayne County, they stop that gas station to fill up. We doing it in house.
We just have certain people that don't come up there for, for, which I'm not going to be there too. They, you can't ask that one.
Why are you talking about me like that, man?
Like, he.
Man, come on, I see what you're saying, man. Just so that I don't come up to DPS, you know? Fuck, we're talking about, I don't know, Cor, is Cor is good, we use Cor.
Okay.
We, I've been with Florida in 28 years, that's just how I been.
Okay, so we have fuel. We spoke a little bit about the professional consultant, that's the dispatch. Chief did provide us with the number, the new number for, for the contract that you guys just approved. So we captured that in there to, to reflect that new cost. You know, prisoner maintenance is always a number that can fluctuate, you know? So that, that's just where we settled on in terms of the estimate for next fiscal year. And then the others are, you know, some maintenance costs, vehicle building, repairs and the like. And generally, we, we've kind of kept those numbers in line with the departmental request. Any other questions on police, Councilwoman?
Just, just one. The prisoner, prisoner maintenance, how long do you usually keep a prisoner?
Uh, two days.
Two days.
And then some of those charges are also for sheriffs, right? Do we still have the?
We do, we have to pay the sheriff's departments to pick our prisoners up and transport them down to Wayne County, to Wayne County.
So we intend to make more arrests, huh?
We intend to make more arrests.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else, police?
Thank you.
Okay. We can then move on to fire, Department 337, same page. So we'll start off with the salaries and overtime, permanent salaries and overtime. Somewhat of a similar thing. You'll see we had 1.38 million budgeted for salaries and then only 50,000 was budgeted for overtime, was for a total of 1.43 million. This year, the requested amount, and, and again, we're maintaining the similar, same staffing level. We are increasing a little bit above, we're adding 100, adding 50,000 to overtime to come up with a total of 100,000, along with an increase, slight increase on the salaries of 1.4 million. So it works out to about 1.52 million for the recommended amount compared with the current year's budget of 1.43 million. So about $100,000 difference, along with, if you look at the projected activity, we're projecting we're going to be about, you know, 1.29, 1.3, you know, 1.3 million, just based on, again, the vacancies and the split between overtime and, and permanent salaries. And, and again, as I mentioned, you know, the, the mix is, is a little bit different just based on the vacancies and the increased need for overtime at the department. Jason, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Okay.
Unless you have holiday pay and, and so holiday pay, the, the clothing allowance, you know, these things are bonuses that are paid, they're paid through payroll. If you're looking on holiday pay, it's, it's, it's going to be, the, the numbers is, is off here just in terms of the, the projected activity. My guess is that those, those, not a guess, but I know those bonuses were paid, but I, I expect that they're, they're included in, in the salaries or some, some other category within the department. Just don't think, again, the payroll system is picking them up correctly and they're just not showing accurately. But we have holiday pay as part of the union contract, we pay that. We did pay that this fiscal year. Again, that's, I believe that's a fall item in terms of when it's paid. And we included that in, again, in this year's budget. Next, you'll see some of the fringe items in terms of the health insurance and the like. And then the pension, we touched a little bit on that. Again, I would look at, you know, the, the amount between police and fire, that total 664 for fire and then we've got 900,000 in terms of the police estimate. And as we mentioned, that, that number could very well change. Just kind of moving down, we have the clothing allowance or uniform allowance for the fire, fire department. ALS is a bonus that some of the firefighters are eligible for. Those are the main personnel-related expenses. And then we get into some of the other related costs such as office supplies, operating supplies. And in general, we're keeping with the departmental request as well as, you know, some of the historical trends that have been occurring, both for the current and past fiscal year. So any questions on, on any of these fire-related items? Yes.
Are they do, any of the employees do raises, like police?
So we don't have any raises in our contract coming up. However, there are some individuals, excuse me, that would have some step increases in their pay from, say, two years to three or four years to five years. There'll be slight increases just for a few individuals. But there are no raises across the board for firefighters or the officers, so.
Are you fully staffed?
Yes, we are one short right now.
One short? Are there any grants for the fire department?
So we just submitted a grant for a safer grant for personnel. We just submitted a grant for turnout gear, which would be in, let me, where to say it? Operating supplies, which we budget 20,000 for. We just submitted a grant for $35,000. That would cover brand-new turnout gear for all our firefighters. So we are writing grants and submitting grants constantly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Does? So I'm going to flip on over to page number eight. And then we just have a few, a few carryover items for fire. But I'll, I'll go ahead and move on to building. As you know, our building department, we are changing the, kind of the operational structure of the building department. The current year and in the last couple fiscal years, we did have city employees working in that. And that's why you see no budget for salaries under Department 371. All of the employees now will be provided through our contract to Bucelli. And so all the salaries and fringes are now zero based on the contractor relation, relationship that we'll be employing. And the cost for the consultant are down below under professional services. And we tied that number to the projected revenues that came back on page one. And that figure that you see there, that $315,000 figure is 69% of all the rep, building department revenues that we projected. So that figures is, again, directly tied to the revenue. So to the extent that those revenues go up or down, we'll see a corresponding change in that consultant figure there. So that's, that's really it. You know, again, we're, we're kind of moving everything over into the consultant and putting everything into the line item. We did keep a few, a few budget line items for supplies and for training in that, in that, within that department. But, you know, the majority of those costs are now going to be incurred with the consulting contract. Ready, good? All right. Next, we're moving on to code enforcement. Here, we're, we're, a couple of things going on here. One is we generally will get some, through, I believe it's a CDBG grant, we generally will get some amount of cost reimbursement or, or grant for our code enforcement. Usually it's about $20,000 per year. We are, I believe, we believe that we are behind one year. And so we projected $40,000 in reimbursements, which is the $20,000 for next fiscal year, as well as catching up for a prior fiscal year. So that's why we have the $40,000 in there. We have the salaries that are listed there. And, you know, that's the majority of the, of the cost that, with that code enforcement department. Most of this is going to be tied up in salaries and with the fringes and, and the like. So. So, you know, we've got those expenses laid out, keeping the staffing levels current. We did have some changes, I believe, earlier in this fiscal year, which caused a little bit of a decrease in some of the numbers that are being generated over there. Because before, I believe we were incurring some pension costs within that department. But that's pretty much it. We, again, we've got our, the salaries and fringe causes for that department along with a small number of administrative expenses there.
How many code enforcement officers do we have? Are we short?
Is it two, two full-time?
We got more than that. We got four, think four, Moose, Hill, four, right?
No, so we have two and a supervisor.
Just two?
So Worthington, Myers is supervisor.
Yeah, Myers, and then we have Paisley, and then we have?
What?
Worthing, yes.
That's right, we lost officer.
Any? Is that considered full?
Go to three forty.
Short?
No, well, we added officer this, this past year. So we had, what, three last year?
Well, we, we had three. We, is this right now?
Yeah, we're three.
Okay. We'll move on if there aren't any other questions. We'll move down to Department 441, which is our DPW. This is essentially the general fund portion of DPW. And Jerome, correct me if I'm wrong, it's where we, you know, basically costs that are outside water department and road department. And so a number of things that are, that are included in here, grass cutting. We also have our, when we have to do boardups, when we have to do cleanups such as dumps and, 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 you know, anytime there's any kind of cleanup needs at a, at a lot, those are, are costs that are captured within this department. And, and again, it's a general, you know, obviously it's a general fund-based item here. The department has requested two workers for, for the, for the department. And Jerome, you know, can you just give a brief explanation as to how those workers would be employed?
So I requested two additional workers this year to help with the grass cutting, building maintenance, because we use a lot of our water staff outside water. And trying to get away from that, you know, trying to keep them more in the water. As we grow in water, we have a lot more work to do. So I, I asked the mayor and I asked Mr. Carey to that, could I add two employees to that line item to assist with some of minor stuff in the building, like moving furniture or something like that? So I don't have to take away from my water staffs. Because we're, you know, as the state evolved, they come down with more and more regulations that we have to adhere to.
Are these full-time employees?
Well, that's how mama had to talk to the mayor, Mr. Carey. And put the number in there, we just had to figure out which direction you want us to go.
When you do, you've got weed cutting here. When you have properties in the, are we getting reimbursed for the weed cutter? You know, are you putting on their taxes or sending them bills?
Hell, man, stopped doing that years ago.
We, we should have been there.
No.
It was costly to.
Cost too much.
It doesn't cost more.
Because you, you can't, you have to go after them to try to get the payment. So the city attorney basically threw his hands up and said, we can't handle it. You're paying us $125 an hour to go after a $65 grass cutting bill. You know, so it just didn't make any sense. Because they, we were paying, that's litigation, so we have to pay by the hour for something like that. It was numerous, numerous cases.
Then on top of that, you have absentee landlords here.
That's my point.
Can't find them.
Can't find them?
Oh, find them, that bill comes back.
You get a judgment, it's meaningless.
Facts of bills that come back to us in that mailroom. We had to clean them up, because.
Paying taxes though, right, on their property?
But they don't have a current address where the bill goes, we mail it to the current address. And if they chase or move, you know, so we were, we were taking a loss, a big loss. That was, that was one of the reasons we went to a consent agreement. Because of the chargeback to the county.
Y'all understand that?
Okay.
I just have a question. Councilwoman Rich, did this finish?
Yes, Ben.
All right. What's the difference between lawn maintenance and weed cutting?
I can't. Lawn maintenance is the equipment.
So the maintenance of the equipment?
So we have grass cutting over there at DPS. That's why I pay for it, fuck.
Okay, I was just looking, because I didn't, I, I was thinking lawn maintenance, not equipment maintenance, but?
It's called, it's lawn maintenance.
Okay, so that's where, if I'm looking at this right, 180,000 for that?
That's, I think he's referring to tree trimming, Jerome.
Or, it says tree trim slash lawn maintenance.
Tree trim slash lawn maintenance.
Okay, yeah, that's where we pay our tree contract for.
Oh, gotcha.
We pay here from there, and we pay the grass cutters.
Gotcha, and then weed?
And then what's the weed cutter?
Yeah.
That's 441, 813?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, that's the equi, okay.
That's 101.
So, so the?
Wait a minute, it's 70.
That's the equipment, I find that. Yeah, it's back, that's the. I'm seeing tree trimming and professional services, that, that's covering the grass cutting. So we pay, we pay grass cutters like that, we pay some tree trimming out of that. I pay the majority of the tree trimming, you'll see when we get to major and local road buzzing because they're on the road and they all left on major road.
I was gonna say, and this is just me, this is a bit confusing, looking at it, say it's tree trim slash lawn maintenance, and for 180,000 and then weed cutting for 70,000?
Which is really equipment.
We get, we get this equipment.
Okay. Just for clarity purposes, because when I'm looking at it, or trying to explain it to anybody in the public, and they asking, I'm like, well, this is what they told us.
Truck equipment, yeah. So like, we have people cutting the grass right now, right, that's why I pay them for, that was paid.
How many do we, so remind me, because I'm mixing stuff up. I know we voted on United, did we vote this year, this fiscal year on United? For the big stuff. And then we have our local cutters as well as our DPS workers.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And then the boardups that I saw and cleanups and the code up force, but I think that's kind of zeroed out.
Boardups and cleanups in that budget right there, that's at the mayor's discretion. I set those comps up so each year I have a conversation with the mayor and the treasurer. And we see if he wants to continue that program. It's funny that it is discretion, because that's an outside contract. You actually bring in and do the cleanup, and we bring in the boardups. If the mayor say I need to reduce that, then I have to reduce it, or he said, you know, that's a discretionary account that I set up for the mayor.
Now, it's only like tw- two, three times, I guess, boardups slash cleanups, then boardups, then cleanups, what's?
So you see one on there is for in-house, that's for my people. This is the big one, is the contract, where you see 60,000, 40,000.
Forty, yeah.
You see the 80, what is it, 850, 010, 40, 20? Those are discretionary accounts for the mayor.
Gotcha, so hopefully we don't have to touch those with the, not too much. Yeah, okay.
Right, right. So that's what code enforcement, that's why you don't see it in anybody.
Gotcha, thank you.
And sometimes if it's a large cleanup, they can then charge that homeowner if it's?
Yeah, code enforcement do bill people.
Yes.
They do, okay. So they, they take them to court, giving side, change and side, stiff.
Thank you.
And one question, the boardups, where people are evicted and they're set out, does that include that?
No, it's more for va, like if, if there's vacant homes.
This is more like.
Not through the court?
Goes out, and like I say, as a vacant home, if somebody vandalizes it, they'll call for boardup. Or fire, if they have a fire and they need a boardup, we pay for that too.
Okay, thank you.
Because a lot of, some, I think a lot of these are more sort of like abandoned, you know, because there's an abandoned home and it's a danger, we need to get it, get it boarded up.
Or our bills, like when we own, when we own South River, we used to have to board that up all the time, yeah. But like I say, that's a discretionary fund at the mayor, you know, I set up for the mayor.
And then I guess what's equipment? Because it says, because we talked about, I said, equipment, maintenance supplies, but then what's equipment?
And what's a dollar, mom?
It's 10 thousand. So that, that, that account is, Jerome, I think that account is the purchase of any equipment purchase.
We purchase.
Just so we're clear.
Lawn maintenance. Well, lawn, because like we have to buy a weed, I could, or chain blades, all that stuff.
Okay. Because, and then just wanted to point out, you know, one of the big items there is the street lighting. That's, that's a cost that, you know, we are seeing some, some increases in that, that figure. So that, that's always one of the, you know, fairly significant variables. The city did go through a?
We went through it, what, first year here, second year?
Yeah, it's been a few years where we.
We went to DTE, and we did all LED lights here because DTE has had increases. That light, that was to hold us in.
Because we saw a decrease when we switched from the old bulbs to the new ones, but we're starting to see those climb up as the rates are starting to climb up.
Did that project finish?
Yeah. It was a three-year project, wasn't it, yeah?
It was, it was a couple phases with the?
Did they get the situation resolved with all the lights just going pitch black?
Through time, I dial in several.
And middle bell.
Yeah, that's a DTE. We, we, we work closely.
With DTEs?
Me and the mayor, so we have constant communication to, with Bob Recker, which is the regional director for this area. So we, we, we have some things in order to do our funds. Because if you notice, Henry Ralph, we got the new station over there. The new DTE station on Henry Ralph.
And the rest of them?
Call it a fire, was it Glitterwood?
Oh, right there, oh, the substation, got you.
Yeah, that affected us.
I'm quite sure.
Fire, yes. So she's pretty responsive to when me and the mayor reach out to her.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll, I'll flip the page and we can move on, page nine, and pick up with planning. So we have, we do have one employee, and I'm gonna, you know, with, for the approved budget that we put before you, I will be asking to make one adjustment. I placed an employee in community development. And I think the employee splits his time between community development and planning. But just to maintain consistency is probably best for that employee. You'll see the employee currently is listed down in Department 728. I didn't get a chance to talk with the mayor about that. I don't know if there's any preference or if it matters, but we did not make any kind of deletion or anything like that. I just put the, I put the cost down in a, in, in, in the below, below line items, so.
We love them both in planning.
I'm sorry?
Love them together, both in planning.
Okay, okay.
I think I sent the cheat sheet out to everybody to show what we paid last year in planning. I think it was like 178, something like that. And we're, we'll come in like one, was it 35, 45 with the benefits and everything? So we save a few dollars, because we had a consultant last year, McKenna.
So, so right now, you, you see there's no salaries in planning. Those numbers are currently down in community development. For the approved budget, I will have those numbers move from, from community development up to planning to sync up with, with what the mayor provided you all last week, so.
So also a professional consultant, that's what's implied, because the way we pay Chardet.
Yes, it's, 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 it's in, it's in planning.
Yeah, it's in plan, yeah, so that's her salary essentially as a consultant.
So, so we've got, got that staffing for that department there. A few fringe items there, the consultant, and then just some, some administrative items for, you know, memberships and advertising and whatnot. But that's, that's pretty much it. You know, we've got two employees that will be in there, again, moving one up from, from community development. So that's, that's really the, the main items within that department for 721.
Quick question. I know in the past, speaking with one of the representatives from McKenna, I guess it was just a confusion of how some of those funds come in from an applicant. Like the, I guess where they were supposed, where they can be designated, so everything pays for it. So has that all been resolved? Because I guess there was an issue with how the monies were coming in, but they weren't really going back out efficiently. Let me put it that way. Because like, for instance, if a public hearing notice has to go out, the fees that the applicant pays for special land use, all that is supposed to be covered. And I think that's something that's supposed to go like kind of into the coffers.
Okay.
For administrative purposes and stuff like that. But I was just wondering if that had been vibed into?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, Mayor Protem. I'll, I'll have to speak with the, with the staff and get some, some clarity on, on that.
Okay, I know it was a past conversation, I just didn't know presently if it had, just got resolved, I saw.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Next is the Economic Development Department. Really, the, the main item here is the account where you see F R O R, which is First Right of Refusal, Purchase of Land. That is tied to the city's Neighborhood Stabilization Program, where the city identifies certain foreclosed properties and the city exercises its right of first refusal. We're estimating that we would be purchasing about $400,000 worth of land. The revenue, we touched upon that last week, where we sell the properties essentially at cost, along with we do recover about roughly 1,015, about $1,000 for administrative costs that the city occurs in terms of the transactions that are done for each of these properties. But this line item here is tied to revenue. So this, this number here is gonna be offset on the revenue side. And again, it's, it's an estimate based on, you know, what we kind of expect, the number as well as the value of those properties. But that number would be changed, subject to change, but again, it's offset on the revenue side. So that's what's going on in that category there. Next is community development. And again, that was the one where we'll be moving that salary back up into the planning department. So not much activity occurring in, within community developments. So then, continuing on, we get down to our debt service, where we have, that is the amount of the emergency loan that the city took on several years ago. I believe it was $3 million, and I think we pay even $300,000 a year in principal and then outstanding interest. So that's, that's the amount there. We still have several years to go with that, with that loan. I'm not even, I don't even think we're halfway through that if I'm not mistaken. And then next, we have our, an insurance category for our retiree. You see retiree health and life insurance. And that's the insurance stipend that the city pays to retirees. And that is essentially, it's an, it's basically an unfunded liability. You can see it's, it's $700,000 that we were estimating for the upcoming fiscal year. You know, that amount can. You know, that amount can go down. I did, uh, have spoken with the, um, city's HR Director, Mr. Crenshaw, and he's, um, recommending that, you know, we kinda take a closer look at that. Uh, I don't, I don't, you know, know how well the city has been managing that, um, list of retirees in, in the recent years. Couple of things, as, um, people reach a certain age, that the amount that they're owed can go down, as well as they have dependents. And so we just gotta make sure we have the most, most up-to-date information. Essentially, you know, the, kind of the default is just to continue to pay people what they, what they've been paid in the past. But, uh, something that we're gonna really take a good, a good look at and make sure that we're, um, paying everyone what they're owed, not overpaying. Because it is one of the, the larger, uh, line items that the city has, just in terms of, um, post-retirement liabilities.
Okay.
Then the, the next, uh, item, and I think we are getting to the end of general fund here. The next item is inter-fund transfers. And last week, we talked a little bit about general fund subsidies. It's essentially where the general fund has to subsidize other funds. And these are all, I think, always some important items to take a look at. What you see here are transfers that are going from the general fund, transfers out to Brownfield, transfers out to Tifa. Those are, are directly tied to debt service, bonds that were issued years ago for these, um, two entities. And the current amount that they're capturing in property taxes does not cover the debt service. So the city's essentially on the hook for the, the difference. So you see, we're having to cover a total of, of, of almost $800,000, uh, to meet that debt service. At the time those bonds were issued, the expectation was that those entities could cover it. As things would have it, that is not the case. So the general fund is having to pick up the difference. The good thing is, um, the Brownfield bonds, we have next year FY25 and then the following year FY26 and then, but those bonds will then be paid off. So that'll be about a half a million dollars that'll be able to stay in general fund.
No question.
What is it? You said, what is it done by?
We have two more years. So FY25 and FY26. So we'll, we'll be done in spring of '26.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask, what is the, I guess, alternative or vision where we get to a point where we're actually collecting funds from those areas? I'm being a little hopeful and I.
You said, we've done about that for what, about a decade or so? But, uh, yeah, we do, we have to, yeah, we have to capture some money out of the Tifa. In Brownsville, there's money available for Brownsville, but we haven't applied for it. We're gonna need some. Uh, when we adjust our master plan and start rezoning, especially on Cherry Street, you know, where the dump used to be, we're gonna need some money to clean that place up because people used to been dumping there for years. So we're gonna try to capture some Brownsville money at that point for sure there.
We gotta have a, the board has to be filled for that too, right? We gotta do that.
We have a Brownsville board?
Even though I'm talking about Brownsville, I think Tifa's.
Tifa is, is that, did we complete that?
I don't think they've been functioning, honestly.
Yeah, generally, because there's, there's, they don't have any money. That's, that's kind of the.
They're supposed to go, they're, they're supposed to do things like Belleville. They, they did something over the bridge where you, you know, you get off on Belleville Road. The Tifa, they paid for all of that, the decorations, the city of Belleville sign. Like, because they actively go out, capture money and, and raise money. Our Tifa never ever raised a dime.
Well, part of it is any money that they raise, we would be, until they, they would have to go out and raise.
Oh, watch.
250,000 before they could keep a dollar, unfortunately. So.
So they raised nothing.
And 280,000 for those? They don't have grants available for those?
I was asking about the grants for those.
We don't have grants available for those?
Um, well, the grants couldn't go for debt service. So, uh, but that, that's kind of the, the, the issue, you know, we do, we, you know, I know we've, we've had DDA, Tifa boards and they've been trying to, um, look at different things. But, uh, you know, part of it is generally the idea is that they're able to capture a certain amount and that board can then use whatever is available. Because they've got, um, you know, a situation where there's debt service and, and they're not meeting the threshold, they don't have funding. But I, you know, I know in the past, they, they tried to look at different things that they could try and do in terms of, um, I think more so the DDA, uh, in terms of, you know, trying to raise money or trying to, uh, look at some different funding sources and the like.
People, didn't we merge the DDA and Tifa?
I think they were essentially serving.
One, one board, I think it was, yeah.
What was it? I thought it was something else, like a, I forgot the other acronym. I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was Tifa. I think it was DDA and some kind of Economic Development Commission, right?
I think they kinda made that one up down there. Oh, remember they were, they made up cards and they called themselves Economic Development Authority or something like that.
I thought that was like a.
But that wasn't real. I mean, uh. Most of the people do that.
You look at the. She didn't.
All right.
Or simple.
You're correct. I want them to be important too.
Next to there, I have a question. I'm there, I just got a question. You passed out a sheet last week and I just wanted to know what is that?
Sheet?
That all these, oh, that's already in the budget?
Yeah, it's already. Well, just show me where we were cutting.
Of all.
You know, that sheet, it just showed each department where we cut to save some money. I think it was 346,000 or something like that we, we cut out of it, but from last year.
Okay, so it does say the clerk's salary. I mean, the salaries were cut 17,200.
The whole budget, not the clerk's salary, but the whole department.
Okay.
So let's get through that. This is a salary.
Because it says salary.
That's why we lie over there, not her salary.
Okay. Um, because I'm gonna recommend for an increase.
Well, you gotta remember, you gotta remember, slow your roll, play girl.
I'm just saying, no. I'm just saying, just to the.
The last former clerk made more than the current clerk. So that's part of the savings there.
Okay. So.
Wait.
Well, well, man, you do know that they low salary. I mean, you and I were trying to.
Why are we having this public discussion? What, what?
We're like, oh, Nick, this is what we're supposed to do.
You know the clerk is sitting in between us, right?
Yeah. Okay. But I'm just saying, we, we.
No, 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 you're not saying that.
We should, we have, um, actually, um, tried to get a clerk. And you saw that salary, this salary is low.
Can we talk about this next year? Can you at least let her ask for a raise first?
What? Yeah. That's cool. That's funny.
Right, right. See, she brought it.
Our hair.
I might need to go turn the air, you know, get the thermostat on that side.
Oh, well, I'm appetited.
We gotta, we gotta put Felicia in contempt of court or something.
I need to chill.
Yeah, I'm still confused though, because on the, on the budget for 24 to 25, I was saying 28,000, 128,800, but then the actual budget only says 126 can fit. So which one is it?
I don't have the number that you're referring. I'm sorry.
Just the one I let her hit.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, she got that.
The paper this year is bad.
So it's all by 2,000 now? So the budget says 126? Budget says 126. All it is, is her salary and Malika's. So there you go. It's, it's just the clerk's and the assistant clerk's salary, deputy clerk. And we got some part-time money in that too, right? We have a part-time employer for the election.
That's the temporary, right? Salary is temporary.
Yeah. They start in July.
Fond still has a few words to make the cuts in.
Last year was 146. This year I got 128.
But let's do that.
Yeah, it's not.
I'm like, am I on the wrong page?
On last year, it says from 23, 24, Amendment Affairs, 150. So, and then it goes to the projected, that's the projected activity for 2022.
Can we see yours? Because.
Can we see on the same page?
Which, which page? Which, which one was it?
He's talking about his, uh, his cuts, budget cuts, that page.
Yeah, he's comparing that.
Can you send yours down? That look different.
Yeah, it do look different.
It does.
Where's she, where's she saying 152?
It does, that says 152 in the budget book.
On the budget book or something?
Oh, oh, oh. On the midic budget, yeah, yeah. So, so it was a little higher than we have on the cheat sheet.
That's where the mail is, right? They just wrote it. Yeah, like I think it's.
I mean, no.
But it says 114, 114, 140 on, on page five, up under salaries probably. And then it has the temporary person up under there for 15.
So they separated it. That's all. Nope. You get your question asked? Did. Okay.
That's pretty much it for just, uh, if there are any questions. I did wanna, uh, kinda quickly go through a couple more fun before we, um, break out for the evening.
Just for broke.
Everybody good?
You got a.
He's got it.
Cause. Yeah, we did. He's about to hand him.
Um.
Pipe some red.
Soul soldier.
That's.
Sure. And that's me, well, we need to be first really. By the budget, that's an entry. Then we have to pass it. It really was supposed to pass by children groups.
So I see a publicity. So I think about you.
But next we have the public there.
St. Staining, other care. Tough. We're eating after college, that's just.
This, they're probably going with dissolve, it's like we, you know, escapes me in the general, but we're really supposed to have it done by Jen, Jen, for her sheet. She will call my especially.
Type the rich, go under what type?
Got the holiday.
Um, but Kim's just that, you know, I, I was gonna give you guys a table of contents. That's gonna be.
You all can read, go ahead. I won't.
Money you're taking.
Just, just put that under, we'll make a tab two.
Tab two, okay.
And I'll provide a table of contents. We'll just go with tab.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are, um, looking at Fund 208, which is our Parks and Recreation Funds. Uh, this fund is, is mainly funded through the Parks and Rec Millage, uh, via the property taxes. And so, uh, we get into the, uh, projections on, on the revenues for this fund. And then we'll get into some of the, um, expenses. But, uh, the bulk of the revenues are again from the property taxes. And then there's some, some revenues that the, um, the, the department will generate, largely tied to the recreation center, um, for certain fees and, and, uh, building rentals and the like. So, uh, just starting with page, uh, number one at the top, you'll see at the far end, um, the requested budget of 482,000. And I apologize, I didn't, I didn't, uh, I missed the column, the far right column. But the requested budget and the recommended budget are the same. So we have 482,000, uh, that's projected from property taxes for next fiscal year. There's some, some captures that, that occur within the fund. And we have a net of 457,000 that we're projecting for the fund, uh, to collect from property taxes. Then we look at the, um, uh, other revenues that are again tied largely to operations at the recreation center. We'll see court rentals, uh, open gym fees. Uh, one of the largest thing is the building rental when people rent out their rooms at the, uh, at the Dozier. And then that's, that's gonna, you know, work out to a projected 58,200 in, in revenues from that department for, uh, fees and rentals, which leaves about 515,000 in total revenues that we're projecting for the Parks and Rec Fund for next fiscal year. No questions, then we can go ahead to page number two. This is where we get into the, um, various, uh, expenses. The first item you see there is, uh, professional consultant, and that is for grass cutting, um, out of there, Jerome?
That's most part.
Yep. So, uh, you see the amount that's in, um, uh, 20, 208, 443, 801, professional consultant. That number again is for, uh, the, um, outside, um, uh, grass cutters, the, uh, contracted grass cutters for the city parks and the recreation center. Then we move into our salaries, uh, for both the permanent and part-time, full-time and part-time, uh, people at the, uh, department. And then we have the fringes that, that are there. And then we get into some of the related operational and administrative, uh, items, the operating supplies, special events. We have some, uh, professional consultants, programming. Those are all gonna be kind of a function of how much programming is done. You know, whether it's summer programming during the year and the like, but we make some appropriations for that. And then one thing to keep in mind, we also, um, you know, kinda work with the Parks and Rec Commission, because their job is to have some oversight over these, uh, over how these monies are spent as well. So, uh, we just try and lay these, lay these items out here. We have, uh, utilities included, um, for 65,000. You see building maintenance. And then we have, uh, amount of $50,000 for capital improvements. You know, we generally try and include some monies. You know, there's a lot of work that needs to get done there. There's some, uh, work that's being done. I know the mayor's and, and, um, staff are working on trying to work on, um, grants that have been, uh, provided or we expected for the city to get. But this is really coming out of this, uh, this, this funds, operational funds, that $50,000 for capital improvements. And it's just kind of a general appropriation that, um, you know, the city, the mayor council and the department can, uh, decide how best to use that money. I did wanna point out there, right now we got $170,000 in there. That money's gonna be moved out. We, we have not spent $170,000 on capital improvement, um, for, for this current fiscal year. That, that money should not be in that, uh, particular fund. We're gonna be clearing that amount out. So, um, you know, we still have $30,000 that's available that we're projecting, as well as 50,000 that's in, uh, in next year's budget. And then, uh, that's, that's really it. You'll see, uh, two other items that I did wanna point out. We have the administrative services, uh, charge that we, we do, we do, uh, apply against this fund. That figure's 30,000. We did not increase that amount, unlike other funds. And then we have, uh, $100,000 transfer out. And that's, uh, generally, historically, the amount that's just based on the understanding of the Parks and Rec Millage, that some of those funds should be directed towards senior, uh, activities or senior services. This fund transfers $100,000 out from, um, the Parks and Rec Fund to the Commission on Aging. So that's what that $100,000 is listed for, um, under the Parks and Rec expenses.
Cheers.
Any questions?
Is?
Wanting.
Senate team to say, what, I mean, what, what would that though, with the 170?
So that 170,000 should not be, it's, it's money that was incurred for a project that's not tied to the rec center. So that expense should not be in, in the Parks and Rec Fund. We're gonna clear that out.
I get to be nothing away?
Good.
Was there a question?
Not that. I'm just. Yes, the Summer Fest. We are gonna contribute to the Summer Fest if we're not.
Yes.
Uh, I did not put an appropriation in there for Summer Fest.
Yeah. I didn't know if they had them. I, I have had even communication with anybody, you know, actually many here. I was, I was told to Cuffland, Rutledge, a couple, just in a few months. The question was, are we doing the Summer Fest? And my answer was no, because we had had the audit finished, so I don't know how much money we have. So I'm not gonna commit to spending, uh, on the Summer Fest. And obviously, the audit won't be finished till beginning of July. So I think the city's gonna sit this one out this year. Because we typically spend a good deal of money with police, fire and DPS setting up, being there all weekend. We're paying time and a half, double time. So I don't wanna commit anything that is not absolutely necessary. We're paying time and a half, double time. Um, so I don't wanna commit anything that is not absolutely necessary to, you know, how much money we have.
Absolutely. But what's this nine seventies, uh, for summer fest on page please?
What was your question, counsel?
Okay, nine seventies for summer fest on page two. Seven five, two oh eight, seventy-five, three eight oh.
Uh, that was a, uh, oh, that should not, that should not be in there. Um, we, we, we definitely zeroed that out. That was, uh, there were some monies that were paid in the prior year. We just picked up a little bit of activity. Um, but all of those were just from, from the, um, current fiscal year, uh, monies that were spent during last summer fest.
You too.
But there was clearly, there is a summer change. That money comes out of the park to be right.
No.
Yeah.
We generally try and, and.
Donations.
Yes.
So it's.
Good on Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Uh, wanted to then cover this on air.
That's.
Looking at that to take this down, can we? Yes, I see it, I understand.
So we're just going to tab three.
And six. And. Completely. But you can. General, can we, we tell them.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
That's not one of the memories. I just.
Service. That we have.
That's two page.
Too bad.
I'm sorry, my.
I always count.
Great, this all, we don't know.
My holes, one makes up for public. This very. Close to.
With baby. And this. Who is. Who I had in your feelings? He's. He's one. Yes. Fifteen year. And then I do my thing. And. Pink this.
Matter of these shots, I'd care. I mean, oh, they're.
But. We. The match I was always saying. That's what it was your day. True. I suppose that. Something's saying, I am what the boy be. This will work. It's not, uh, it'll save some of the.
They're also.
They will. And they're like, yeah. Ever for. What's that? I mean, actually back. Just. Right.
And Jesus don't play being. People. Appropriated, yes, only years. It. That was. Was. No.
That is. Please, but they know, conscious and they're gonna make. It's a dance. And then. It's a light. Yeah, you hear it. Just totally worked out.
But it makes action business. But thanks.
Yes. You work one book in this. I didn't.
People.
You tell. I mean, it's a little tricky thing. It's that's why I do that for. I felt that it was our, I miss like this the big downs. I mean, if we like to lose that. No, you still in the mail. To. Wait, three weeks.
Three old.
I'll try that. The. She said, do we take the.
We will put in our folders.
Yeah, I saw that. First, cause I was in your, uh, don't know how I was always.
Your motorcycles?
He come out, son, on the side like.
You're talking. Okay.
Could you ride by me? Yeah, white, but I was right behind.
Yeah, I gotta stay after. Stay and don't talk to me about something.
Call me.
Stay.
And I, I'm doing.
Do they, everybody?
I'm gonna say five minutes, even what I know is like, it ain't gonna make me.
Okay. No problem. My turn.
You know, the way things is. They get the minimum threshold. I think that. Ultimately, she's true. What's your question?
Yeah, right. Okay. So how would it actually be?
I get you, Alan. Listen. They have some.
So what we just got is tab three, right?
Separated.
Good nights and all. Care to more and smell and help them than they can have since it's done.
Is what I hear both. Shouldn't it be more? Did you wanna put any holes in you or put some holes in us?
Yes, this. Our. They respect it. My, my, yes, so you go. Someone. When is on top. I saw my staple. This year is.
Um, yeah, that's what you want. After a way to.
I didn't.
Yeah, babe.
You can't say anything. Okay. All I mean is, it's a big. We were looking at. I'll be as. Like, you know, like, playing your happy. Now, but, but yes. Yeah, hey. Need it. You asked her, yes, I saw me, so. Mark, she was like, right? He says. Yeah, cuz they're in a. That's great. And you should. It's something.
Okay.
Yes, both of them. Like.
Okay, so the.
Charge.
That's we. Charge.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And everything in it?
Hey, yeah, but I am the.
Okay. So they come over to your yards, do they?
Has they come over to your yard? So. I could, if we just, we, we be. They lost shot. They get high and they just. Like, yes, yes.
Okay.
For this, I've been. And why should you?
Yeah, that, um.
Let's see that. Yeah. At least also go back. You still want?
What?
And without you account of.
Oh, it's, oh, okay.
I was supposed to go back to there. So that's it was that, that's your card. That's by the neck, that's all that. That, you know.
Yeah.
They may not go to.
So that may be why, she may be booked. That's why, that may be why there, there's a negative amount there.
And the fuel account.
Yeah. Oh, cuz yeah, yep, yep, yeah, yeah.
We build, we. They, they don't have no bill.
Yeah, okay.
Deal.
That's, I was wondering why that amount was negative. Yeah.
We build.
Okay.
We first them.
So she's, she's just, she's just.
I.
Booking it against the, it looks like she's booking it against the, uh, the fuel expense.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we should, we should probably, but it should, should be some up here to.
Should be something like that.
Yeah.
Be the.
That's what I'm thinking. It's not only. Once they're all to plan, I'm assuming there's more. Yeah. But. I'll try it. You see, I have to work. My. No. Then. Yeah, night. Come on, I'll sleep. This is my fault. Yes. Um. I don't have to. Pop phone. Bring it on my phone.
My toe.
You know. I thought all done. Good to come. These two. There's some stuff inside. What? A given. Come on, me. Can show the list.
Okay, um, so wanted to cover the, um, Commission on Aging. Um, you know, similar to Rex, uh, Parks and Rec, they have, uh, a dedicated property tax mileage. We lay out these amounts here, um, to give you an idea of how the, how their revenues are generated. So you see, um, two hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and, and, uh, property taxes that are projected. After the various captures, we project, uh, for this fund, uh, a net of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, along with that hundred thousand dollars that's taken from the Parks and Rec Fund. Essentially redirecting a hundred thousand dollars of the Parks and Rec mileage over to the Commission on Agents, uh, Commission on Aging. Which leaves them with a total, uh, revenue projection of three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, just under three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So that's their, the amount of their projected, uh, revenue. And then we just, uh, look at the, at the very expenses, because essentially this, we, as a city, move these, move these funds out to the commission. So, um, we just have two direct line items. One is the, uh, hundred thousand dollars that comes in from the Parks and Rec Fund. And then we have the two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that comes from the, uh, property taxes. So essentially, this fund is just, uh, capturing the revenues and then we move those revenues out. And then the commission, uh, and they generally will provide a breakdown of their budget, but, um, we're simply just serving as the fund, you know, essentially as a funding unit for, uh, this commission. So we, we capture the, the revenues. We, we captured the hundred thousand dollars from the Parks and Rec Fund and then we'll redirect those, uh, monies over to the, uh, commission. Generally, we, you know, we include them in the tax distribution and then we have to also, um, we will, in the spring, we usually cut a one-time check for the hundred thousand dollars that they receive, so.
This might be a crazy, uh, question, but we, uh, we're all paying for the senior wing down there. Like, we're the, isn't that.
Agreed, because we should leave, got a strike a couple of years ago.
So that wouldn't be like in the revenue part of it? Go back.
So, yeah, and, and that's, um, right now, we have not budgeted for that. We would look to bring that separately. We have had some costs. That was that hundred and seventy thousand dollars that I had mentioned. They had, um, cause they have started work on that, uh, that project. But the, the, the charges were, were, um, in error built against the Parks and Rec Fund.
Got it, correct.
I think what we're gonna need to end up doing is bringing that back to council. We're finalizing the grant now with, um, I believe it's the Department of HUD. And then we'll be able to say, hey, here, here are the costs and we'll have the revenues and everything. I expect it's gonna need to be done through general fund. Uh, but once, uh, Sade is final, she's working on getting that agreement finalized with HUD now. We have some pre-development costs that, that were incurred, but, uh, I think the natural way to, uh, place to put that will be general fund.
Thank you.
You got any more funds for?
Um, I would have to, I do have the rubbish fund, but I would have to, I just need to print it up if we wanna.
Let's do it. It's easy. It's simple like the rest of.
Give me a couple minutes.
What?
You don't want us to ask no questions about GFM?
Right, right. Said, don't ask no. Very simple, you don't ask no question.
Cause I, I think Latoya get hit up just as much as I do weekly, you know, regarding.
Um. Let, I know. That's just great. Okay, great. Thank you. And that. And that'll be. It's sad that I suffered new at first. Talking to the, that time's house. Talk me. That if the. You got. Out this note. Oh, yeah. Yeah. The stakes. No, wait, and when just wasn't. No, we're that should. Get, uh, be really slapper. You know. She, yeah.
Definitely.
I did not really like it. I mean, I told this. Oh, you should promote better now. But you what, and I can, I said, I can do it. And I would say to the. She should. I'll get her, I love it. What is that? It, 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 it. Yeah, it's a. He did. City Fair Talk for. Wait. This, this, and. Let me, let me say. I see where. Didn't look here. I've met. Yeah. I don't have your face anymore. Are you on the watch? Yeah. Do, I'm sure. Yes, I'm. Well, I'm sure that someone cares. So my. It's like. My, 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 daddy. You need to. Yeah. Yeah, it's what you. This game. You're. Then. You're good at that. Yeah. And this is. I can answer. That's it. Say. Here. Do you want? Yes. Then. That's what's it. Jack. Yeah, that's one for. Yeah. You gotta move. You don't lose. That, that. And. And that. They don't. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just come in. He's that day. Really hard with nothing. I did. I went hands. It's good for you. So that's where I can do. Yeah. That was. You. But. Can you? It's a new. Oh. Well, maybe we get back. But the. Two. He's careful. Two. What? It's like. Maybe. Nothing is. And yeah. It could. Then it's bad. You. Make it bad. I'm not. Not. Yes, I'm not dead. Not it. It's not enough. I'm doing. It. It. Me. I know. But it's about the. That's my. There. Because. I'd like to. Oh, so. It's. You. You can. What can see. Yeah. I've been now. Oh, no. Big set. What could? Tell me now. Both. Yeah, yeah, then. You bought. Cause I'll say. It's. How is. There's the cloud. Do anything. And. Do you see? Uh, my manager. Fifty. Here. Oh, do me. I think. That's the. Well, we're. So. I'm sorry. And it's. But good. And it's not. Yeah. Especially. What? Then. What do you kind of talk to? I got. Well. And it's. He misses my first. Have me. May I go to curtain? I'm. In any of them. What they think. But you know. You got this all over. They're. I'm best. I need. We read. But. Best. The. All we need. You want. You want. Not that. Do with me. This is. I'm not slick on. And I was. And I'm about anything. Where the show. It's first off. Me too, actually. Most of the shit. All about your, make you chill, ask if they should not hear me. You hit him with the gun, he has. Yeah, I made it. Yeah, what can I shoot? We thank. You put in this just. You see, try to. So that's the. Ladies, do a text. And you not. Scott got a body. Why does that mean? Hmm, what? Uh, love you. A breath that you hide again in the middle of town. Believe so, I say one year old. And what? Got the attitude, can not. You don't want to know. On here, okay, something that. You're thinking something? They do so. You also.
Yeah, dogs. Uh, clerk is bringing the um. I see, man, I'm losing my crowd, yeah. Losing my crowd. You, you, you gotta keep the food to the, to the end. That's, that's the trick, yeah. Yeah. Sure.
That whole bit. I watched the fires. I have lots of so we have a. You walk in the light. And yeah, you know, friend walks so. I was. It's all. So. She go for a team. Have a thought, please, show. Many not men. Even though. See, not the bad gods, just. That one all that. I had to do it, need to be, what? Where are you, some fun? Well, I take, I'm small with a tail.
So a, after this, we'll just have um, the street funds remaining.
Or one new one. One new that connects. One next revenue.
Okay.
What yet happened to the special need?
Two more, yeah. You got the street, the street funds, um, and then we, you know, then after that, we have the water fund, uh, still with me.
But we.
Yeah.
You have, you have that street.
Um, they're pretty much, the, the street funds are pretty much, I, I just got a couple of questions with Jerome, um. Yeah. Yeah, it's. It's not a lot, but it's, it, they're, they're, they're long. That's why, that's why I kinda save those for. Next Friday. We need to um. I just need to get with you in terms of the projects that are, yeah, the carryover and all that.
Yeah, far. He steering the jump offs. You know, and why? And your fun is fine. I'm like, I don't.
So wh- while, while that's being distributed, um, we're gonna finish up with fund two-two-six, which is our um, uh, garbage fund. Uh, the, our rubbish fund, we refer to it um, as we refer to it generally. Uh, this is where we, we do two, two main things in terms of um, paying for our trash-related expenses. We collect property taxes as well as the rubbish fee. Um, and so those are the two main sources of revenue for uh, for this fund. The, the property taxes, that's, that's done in the form of a mileage. And so the uh, amount of that per house is gonna vary based on the value of the homes. Second, the ru, the second item is the rubbish fee and that's just a flat fee. Regardless of um, the value of the home, that's a flat fee that's generated. Uh, for purpose of this, we kept the rubbish fee the same. Jerome, what, what's the uh, rubbish fee uh, this year? Do you, do you recall?
He's on the.
Thought we were saying, do you have that?
No, the uh, fee for, on, on the um, that we assess to the, on the taxes.
Oh, this video. This food.
Yeah. Eighty-nine dollars, okay. So a total of uh, just under a hundred and eighty bucks or whatever.
You got the chutney?
I, I, I haven't cha, I haven't changed this year. I mean, there's, there's a um, decent amount of um, fund balance in this fund. So I didn't, I didn't mess with the uh, with this amount of it. Okay, so uh, as I mentioned, we have our property taxes that, that are generated. That's, that's in the form of a mileage. Um, so you see that, that amount that's laid out there? And then as I'm, as we were just discussing, we have the flat fee. We assess that on both the summer and winter taxes uh, at, at a rate right now of eighty-nine dollars. Uh, we did not change that for purposes of this budget. Um, so we, we uh, estimate the numbers based on that. A little, little, right around about two million dollars that we are projecting out on revenue side. And then if you flip to the second page, we've got um, three costs, uh, three expense line items here. One is the contract for rubbish, um, that's the amount that we pay to our uh, trash contractor. For pickup at the uh, various residences. And then we have an incinerator charge that is, is paid. Uh, and then the last item is the um, administrative charge that is paid back to general fund. So those are the um, the, you know, the three main uh, expense items. With obviously the more important of those being the uh, contract rubbish charge that is a GFL that we're.
Yes, sir.
That's paid, uh, so all those monies go to GFL. And that's, that expense is based upon how much they actually pick up on a, on a week-to-week basis.
You got money to go to GFL, if you need that money, go to CW. Yeah, W C S A.
I've got a, got a pretty big fund balance.
Yeah.
I just have a question regarding incinerator.
Yeah.
Uh, can we expand upon that? Cause I didn't even know any of those or any use to.
That go, that's where the lab here, where we take our track. It's wooden metals. So you know, I represent the mayor of CW S A. Such a way, silencer, authority with the fire communities. That's what we pay it to. Why trash to go to the lab?
Oh, okay.
The incinerator used to.
Used to be over there in Lynch.
Just to give you history, it used to be right there at the opposite inch of road. They tore it down. When they tore it down, they paid out the community. They're more high, took it, gave all the community some money and then they called the authority, which I represent the mayor.
Got you. Okay, I just saw incinerators. That's all I was thinking like, okay.
The incinerator and administrative fee, if you see there, that goes to CW. Such a way, silencer, the door.
Okay.
Pay for the track.
Thank you, thank you. Where, where y'all meet at?
They buried.
They moved.
It was here.
I was here too.
First day, we moved, we go to all five.
Then they go golf.
Yeah. They'll never meet.
He volunteered, whatever.
The mayor appointed.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, I got any questions on this one? Straight forward. Two million a year we spend on garbage. So what day did you guys pick for next week?
You, you don't count?
Um, I do care. All right, I got my calendar open.
Okay. I'm looking mighty too. Next week is busy.
It is, good. Only that day I come there is two, Monday or Tuesday.
And Monday or Tuesdays, gonna be me too. Shoot, yeah, yeah. Probably Monday is kinda.
Was everybody else's?
I can only do one day, two, the night is me.
Yeah, Monday is all like.
Let's do Tuesdays. I got, I got another meeting in Detroit Monday. It might run low.
Six P M?
Yeah, six, yeah. So we're gonna do next Tuesday at six.
So we gotta do major and local streets. We, we should, uh, we, we'll have that to you by Monday. Um, I just gotta, Jerome and I just gotta get a couple, um, just gotta get synced up on some of the projects and everything. And then um.
So we got three funds Tuesday and then we'll be done until we do the water fund in June.
Yes.
Actually, we got our next council meeting, we'll do the public hearing on the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with Gina on the timing, cause we gotta publish that, um, so we just gotta sync up on the uh.
Oh, we gotta get that out. Oh.
That's how many days.
We got, we got fifteen day notes?
Well, see, I'm making, we said we'd want it in jail.
No, we got, we had to vote first mi, well, it was supposed to be in by June first.
Yeah.
But our first meeting in June is what day?
You make the June.
First meeting in June will be June the third.
June first is a weekend, so we have to the third. So we'll get you.
We still in the water part and I have meetings.
Okay.
For the water rates, yeah, yeah.
I deserve fact that I don't fuck it up. I just won't break any more state rules. You know, our revenue share is held up right now, right?
That, that's, that's a, that's, that timing is a, that's a local.
Oh, it's local charter. That's charter.
Different, different, some people, they don't start their budget till, till June. Yeah, that's, that's, that's local. It just has to be adopted. The state just requires it to be adopted by.
By June thirtieth. Oh, good. Oh, we're good. Y'all deal with breaking charter rules? So I was gonna meet that Saturday. Or Friday night? It was Saturday or Friday night? Well, part of charter, we're supposed to approve the budget by June first. June first falls on the weekend, so. I'm saying we got till that next Monday, which is our normal meeting. Um, but if y'all say anybody, we don't wanna technically break the chart, you know?
So, which, which you got, I think.
Street or some of those.
So we got uh, bigger policy robes, uh. We have the uh.
Just the best to do with the death service. But we, you know, we've covered, covered. Basically, the money that's come is out.
She didn't say like special meeting?
But it's some kind of actual activity. Just uh, the two increases.
Oh, two street.
Pride.
Yes, no, you could do it.
It's just a regular street fund, major and local.
Pay, pay, carry it.
Right. Y'all just wanna roll with June third? It is not that big. All right, let's go, so. So we're hoping to have it pass June third. Okay, but shooting at least everything but the water.
Yeah, water, cause this, that's a whole piece of thing.
Remind me to skip that meeting, cause that's what people come throwing.
They be mad at me, nice.
Usually. Yeah, you right, you right. And I appreciate you being there.
Yeah, what good is what you always said?
Man, we gotta get these new meters and stuff. This, this painful talking to be, when people talking to me, I don't even know what to tell them. Sorry. You're right.
You know, sprinkling.
Okay, we have the public participation? We didn't send no slips, I'll do it.
Yeah, I bet.
Any, any publics wanna participate? Mayor and council, any comments? All right, we have most of the jury.
So moved.
All y'all say then. All those in favor? I know it ain't no pose.
Eight seventeen, me.
It was a productive meeting tonight.
Eight seventeen?
Eight seventeen, yep.
It was productive.
I'll take this.
Yeah, they sent two emails. Rush sent his.